Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance and we'll start our meeting.
Thank you, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, for attending and all those who watch online. We're glad to have everybody aboard. This is the Union Township Board of Trustees' regular meeting for March 11th, 2021. Let the record show that all three trustees are here. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here, as always. Also, Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer, also present. Gentlemen, we'll move on to the first item in business, which is approval of our minutes. The first would be from the February 11th regular meeting. You've had a chance to look those over. If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved. Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is the February 11th zoning meeting minutes. Is there a motion to approve those?
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. Mr. Campbell, the next item is correspondence. Do you have anything to bring up tonight?
I have none tonight. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. So we'll skip down to our department reports are next. The first report is from our Fire and Emergency Medical Service Chief Stan Daimling reporting.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of February, the department made 165 fire responses, 396 emergency medical responses, and we saw a total of 405 patients. The department completed 1,196 hours of training, participated in 17 public education details, and completed five life safety inspections or fire safety inspections, and that completes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
No, sir.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Chief, I did want to mention, I often watch and got to watch the most recent You're on Fire segment that gets posted on the Fire Facebook page where the firefighters go into a school and there's kids who are doing a great job and they get singled out, one per classroom, I think, and not every kid gets it, but they had to do something special or be doing something really good in school and then the fire department goes around and gives them a special certificate and a little ceremony. So it was just really cool to watch and it's a great outreach to the different schools.
Yeah, and just to give credit where credit is due, that's done with the participation of Firehouse subs over here in East Gate as well, and they give them a certificate and they give them a gift certificate for a free sub as part of that, and they get the plastic fire helmet and get recognized, get their picture taken, get a free book in the library at the school. It's a really neat program.
And they make the Facebook news.
Yeah, exactly.
Right. That's a really cool program. I get to watch. I've never really brought it up before, but I just happened to think about it tonight and it was really cool to watch. If you've never seen that before, check out the fire department on Facebook page. You can see what they're doing there. It's really great. Our next report tonight is from our Police Department Chief Scott Gaviglia.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of February 2021, the Communication Center handled approximately 2,560 calls for service for police, fire, and EMS. There are 101 records requested. We had a couple student riders in February. On the administrative side of things, the agreement was signed with Axon for the body cameras. Some of the hardware started to arrive. The timeline for implementation, we hope to have some test units out by the first week of April and hope to have the whole department live by the end of May, beginning of June. Also in March, we opened back up the PD lobby. We had restricted access when COVID was raging at the time. The numbers are down, so the lobby's open for the citizens. Patrol side of things, we took 272 incident reports, investigated 86 crashes, conducted 94 traffic stops, issued 75 citations and 47 warnings, conducted 379 field interviews, made 104 criminal arrests, 40 traffic arrests, and we served 122 warrants. K-9 unit for the month seized 14 grams of marijuana, two grams of heroin, four grams of methamphetamine, and a couple narcotic pills. INVs closed 69 cases to date in fuel costs for the month, which was about $8,000 with $31,000 driven. That concludes my report, sir.
And fully staffed right now?
Yes, sir, we are.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Awesome.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it.
The next report tonight is from our Service Department, Mr. Matt Taylor, Director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. In the Cemetery Division, from February 15th through February 28th, seven burials were performed, generating $4,250. Two resident graves were purchased, generating $1,100. The total amount generated for the period was $5,803.60. In the Roads Division, the staff treated the roads for snow and icy conditions on February 1st, 2nd, 8th, 11th, 15th, 17th, and 18th. A total of 16 workhorses were completed on 14 township roads, and trees were trimmed in the right of way along six township roads. And then the Parks Division, staff is currently preparing all township landscape beds for mulching, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for you and your personnel for the fine work you did through the terrible, terrible season we had there, seemed like for a week or week and a half. They were just up and at them every day, weren't they?
Yes, sir.
They did a great job, and thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Taylor. I know you're happy that March is here, so.
Yes. It's a mental thing.
Thank you.
And thank you. Sent over several issues about potholes and they get filled instantly, it seems like. So I appreciate the quick responses.
You're welcome.
People do appreciate that. I know that's a tough job to keep up with. Generally, how did your equipment fare through the whole winter season? Were we in pretty good shape or how would you say?
Actually, it did pretty well. I mean, we had some minor breakdowns, but for the most part, everything did pretty well.
Okay.
We used the plows quite a bit.
Yeah. No doubt about it. Thank you. Our next report tonight comes from our Planning and Zoning Department, Mr. Corey Wright, Director.
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. For the month of February, the department handled 208 inspections, fielded seven complaints, issued four warning citations, four 15-day noncompliance letters. Additionally, we resolved 18 items administratively and re-inspected 10 existing violations. We didn't have any nuisances filed for February. Regarding permit activity, we had one commercial permit, nine commercial occupancy changes, six signed permits, two single-family permits. The remaining projects were homeowner projects. 37 permits for the month of February. Monthly revenue, $5,055. That concludes my report.
Very good. Looks like you're turning ahead of last year quite a bit, so good job. Any other questions or comments?
Starting to pick up.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
And our next report tonight is from our Administration, Mr. Ken Geis, Township Administrator.
Thank you. You'll notice on the agenda tonight, there's a resolution relating to the non-collective barry employees for pay adjustments, and I'm recommending that they're consistent with the collective barry employees and a 3% raise for all of those folks. We have an item on the agenda for the establishment of the Spring Junk Days, and last year, you know, we had to cancel those. We were able to do it in the fall and that went very well, so I think that, you know, we have the mechanism and the procedure down so that we can do that safely again this year. So I would recommend that we certainly do that, and we have two of those again this year. There's also an item on the agenda to authorize the bid process for the resurfacing for 2021. Last year, when we talked about the Safety Services Levy, we indicated that, you know, we're fairly restricted on the revenue that we can use for the resurfacing program. And since the passage of the police and fire levies last year, I think that that gives us a little bit more flexibility so that we can expand our road resurfacing program this year and enhance that and really do more roads than we typically do. So I would recommend that we do that as well. There's also an item authorization for us to enter into an agreement for the sanitary sewer easements along with the CCET LLC, the Cincinnati Eastern Railway System. That relates to the Hamilton Safe Project. We've been working very hard with the railroad as well as the Clement County Commissioner's Office, the Prosecutor's Office, and the Water and Sewer Division to come up with the appropriate alignment and the appropriate easements that are necessary to complete that. We were successful in even purchasing a part of a parcel along Round Bottom Road that we're going to put the sanitary easement or the sanitary line through that. And not only are we going to put the sanitary line through it, it looks like there may be a gas line that's going to run through that or at least in close proximity to that. And hopefully, within the next couple of years, we're going to cooperate with the Clement County Engineers Office for a bridge replacement or some bridge work down there as well that's in that particular area. And again, I appreciate the cooperation from the landowner on that so that we could acquire that parcel and that we could move along really without any further delays on that. There's a resolution tonight also reflecting the local government fund. As the board remembers, last year, we went through a series of resolutions relating to that because there was a major adjustment to the local government fund. This year, I think we can be pretty fixed on what has been established by Miami Township already. That's generally been the standard for Clement County, the Clement County Prosecutor's Office, I believe, has reviewed that. If we vary from that, that actually protracts the entire process and potentially renders it unenforceable if all the communities don't agree to it or a majority of the communities don't agree to it, and then we would go to the statutory method. As we remember, with the amended resolution that we have, the Township Union Township specifically gets a larger share, and it's based upon population as opposed to status as to whether or not you're a city or a village. So I would recommend that the board favorably consider that tonight. There's a perch sort of night for economic development to the CIC, and that relates to a project that we've been working together and trying to coordinate with Jungle Gems and the cinema over there. What they're proposing to do is they're going to create a, enhance the entertainment zone and the outside area there and include a skating rink for next year and outside dining in that with fencing in that, which really would be a great program for us to include in that. We would, I'm recommending that we would participate in a fashion that we would modify the existing lease that we have with the major tenant over there, leaseholder, which is Jungle Gems and with a subordinate lease with the cinema on that so that any funds that we would advance to that, we would certainly be paid back in lease payments and in a manner that's consistent with what we've done in the past. That's also going to include personal guarantees from the owners on that project as well. There's also an item on the agenda that relates to the sale of a parcel at 4455 Eva Lane. This is a parcel that we acquired through the foreclosure process several years ago, and the intent of us acquiring the parcel was really to rectify a bad situation there and to give the adjacent property owners the chance to add property to their existing lots of record. We had an offer from an adjacent property owner to that. We opened that up for proposals and offers from the other adjacent property owners, and we did, we are recommending that we sell that to the highest adjacent property owner that made an offer for that. Happy to report that we did start receiving our draws from the county. We were a little bit delayed this year in that. At the last meeting, we had to advance some funds for the police and fire departments, but we did start receiving those funds. So again, we expect those to be on a more regular basis from this point forward. Our annual reports are online now, so if you wanted to log on and see the annual report that we've completed, I think it's a very professional document and it really demonstrates the activities of the township for the calendar year of 2020. There's an item on the agenda for the continuation of the mutual aid for our fire departments. Mr. Barbieri, our law director, has reviewed that and it's ready for the approval of the board. We also have an item for permanent temporary easements for the Bach Buxton Road improvements, the eastern corridor. We have negotiated the settlements with the State of Ohio for some property takes on a permanent level and on a temporary level for that. In that, we also negotiated some additional off-site improvements that ODOT will make in conjunction with the enhancements to Bach Buxton Road. And the last thing I'd like the board to consider is that we have an MOU, a memorandum understanding with the Clement County regarding the sanitary system as we talked about, and this MOU will encompass the continued maintenance and then the eventual transition and assignment of our lease agreement with the railroad over to the county. The reason that we're involved with this from the beginning is really the township is poised to respond a lot more quickly and efficiently as it relates to the lease agreement with the railroad, but we're not in the business of maintaining and operating a sanitary line. The county's in the business to do that, and through this memorandum of understanding, we're going to allow them to take our lease and we will assign that to them and their rights and responsibilities going forward. We had a very productive meeting with Commissioner Painter in the Prosecutor's Office last week about that, and, you know, I think we're in a position that if the board agrees, it could authorize us to move forward with that because it really is in the best interest of Hamilton Safe and Union Township Clement County. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Geis. Gentlemen, any questions or comments for Mr. Geis?
No, I have not this time, sir. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Geis.
Thank you, Mr. Geis.
And, Mr. Geis, I did have a phone conversation with Commissioner Painter, and he had discussed how he had, you guys had met and worked on this, and I do appreciate the extended cooperation the county's been extending us for this project. So I do appreciate his effort to get involved and also your ability and effort to meet with the county officials to get this thing settled out. There's a lot of complicated moving parts to this thing.
Right.
But in the end, the, all the residents and future businesses will be able to use these new utilities that'll exist, and it'll be great for everybody down there, so thank you for all the effort. Okay. That's our department reports. We're going to move on to public hearings. We have two tonight, so. The first is Union Township overlay case. It's 3-21-0 for the Morelia Group. They're the applicant, and this is for 483, 491 State Route 125. This is a redevelopment request. So I ask, Mr. Wright, could you get us started with some opening comments?
Thank you, Mr. McGraw, and I'll be very brief. The, this case is a continuation or kind of an extension of a case that the board heard last month. Last month, the board approved the Swenson's Restaurant on this part on an adjacent parcel here, and this is the other half of that development, reconfiguring these, this 2.8 acre site or 2.3 acre site with the overlay being the mechanism for that. This is adjacent to Cherry Grove Lanes near Olive Garden, just west of the Hopper Hill intersection with 125. It's in the Ohio Pike Commercial Corridor. Reviewing the site, there is a cross-access easement that will be relocated and redefined through the site to serve both parcels and will actually be needed to extend to the auto body store to the west as well for our conversation with ODOT. In reviewing the site, it's clear that we need to take some additional measures and look at kind of the way that the site flows, and that will sort of be dependent on the final user. This is more, the site plan presented is more or less a white box configuration. There is a need to sort of redefine the site and adjust the parking so that you don't have drive-through traffic, crossing pedestrian traffic, entering the building, so that the building is more kind of a pedestrian haven in that regard for the frontage there. And the analysis, while quite lengthy, essentially, all of the issues are design modifications that can be worked through on the site as part of our process. So with that, the action this evening is in accordance with 1310. The board is to enter a motion to approve, modify, or deny this request. There are, there are nine conditions recommended, and those are just really design-specific modifications that we would work through on an administrative level based on the general orientation of the site and, you know, to realize the best access and pedestrian access, minimize conflicts, et cetera. So that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mr. Wright about his report?
Just, as always, the modifications, the modifications that are recommended here have been discussed with the.
Yes, Mr. McGee. We actually, yes, we sent, we sent them a copy of the staff report. They have them, and we've had additional correspondence with them regarding the access easement as well.
They are in agreement.
As far as we know.
Far as we know. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
Mr. Wright, my question is, is there a desire or would this eventually happen where the parcels would be combined into one parcel or would these always remain separate parcels?
So Swenson's will be a separate parcel from this parcel.
Okay.
What will happen is, is instead of having, let me see if I can get the map up here. Instead of having this small parcel and then kind of this area in the back, what you'll have is a site plan that basically there'll be two lots like this.
Okay.
There may or may not be some opportunity for this. My understanding is Morelia is in discussions with the new owner of the site. They may still pick that up. We have instructed them that if they acquire that, they'll have to come back through the process again. You know, with compiling parcels and assemblage like this, there are certain deadlines that they have to meet with regard to contract performance, so I think that they're kind of going incrementally in that regard.
Okay. And then regarding ODOT, it looks like there's, on that picture there, it is at least five entrances. We're going to condense that down, correct?
Single access point. And to that point, as I mentioned previously, this has been discontinued, and we had an extended conversation with ODOT about one of the requirements being a cross-access easement here because this will likely go away regardless of the final use of this parcel, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
This is a public hearing on this case. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak on behalf of this case? Okay. Seeing there's no one in the public who wants to comment, I'll close the public portion of the hearing, and I'll open the floor now for the trustees. Gentlemen, is there any comments you would like to make or questions you may have?
Well, it's a much lighted sight now since laser tag went out there. It's, you need to get something in there, and it's just looked like a viable situation moving into that piece of property, finally get it cleaned up. I think it'd be a great move.
Mr. Loeb, anything? You want to add?
Just truly kind of follows in line with what Mr. McGee stated there as far as it's been a vacant, open lot. You can see from pictures, so, you know, provided that they're already informed of the nine additional recommendations, you know, that brings it in line with, you know, what the surrounding area is, so it's a good benefit to have.
Thank you. Well, if there's no further comments, then I'll ask for a motion in this case. This is the case number 3-21-0. It's an overlay, focus area overlay district application, and is there a motion regarding this case and the nine recommendations?
I'd like to make a motion that in accordance with Section 1310 of the zoning resolutions, the board of trustees entered into a motion to approve focus area overlay district application as submitted in case number 3-21-0, or is that zero? Zero?
O for overlay?
Or O?
O.
O.
And with the nine modifications that are listed, Mr. Wright has said that they are a world. Thank you.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Loeb?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. It'd be great to have that, a couple sites that are cleaned up and fixed up.
Yes, absolutely.
And a lot of people have questioned that, you know, the access and how that would all work, and I think people will be relieved to see the plans in place. I think that Mr. Wright has worked very hard on to coordinate with ODOT. That's no easy task, coordinating with ODOT.
Amen.
Great. Okay, we have a second case tonight. It's Union Township Overlay Case Number 4-21-0. This is the Great Lakes Property Development LLC. They're the applicant regarding a parcel on Old State Route 74 in Mount Carmel. Mr. Wright, would you like to make some opening comments?
Thank you, Mr. McGraw. This is a new project, about 72, 7300 square feet for a adult with learning disability center for kind of occupational therapy, care, additional educational opportunities for them here on a parcel, a 1.5 acre parcel in Mount Carmel, just north of Damron Lane here. This will be, this will have two curb cuts on the site. Let me get to the site plan here. Here's the existing configuration. I don't think we have it digitally, but that's okay. Two curb cuts. The Mount Carmel Business Corridor indicates that this is appropriate and in line with the focus area and corridor recommendations. It's a very attractive building. It has sort of a Cape Cod residential village type appeal to it, ample parking. There is some buffering and some existing access modifications or access easements that have to be accommodated from the prior configuration of the parcel. There are some recommendations, they're pretty minor, have to deal with fencing and mounding, landscaping treatment along the frontage of Old State Route 74 there, dumpster enclosures if applicable, if they have one. A lot of. A lot of facilities like this won't even have a dumpster enclosure. The monument signage, which is a recommendation to the corridor, things along those lines. Conveniently, there are already sidewalks along the frontage that were installed about ten years ago, so that is a positive thing, and the site integrates that into its design. The action required is, in accordance with thirteen-ten of the zoning resolution, the board has entered a motion to approve, modify, or deny this request. There are six conditions presented, specifically to note monument signage, which is a standard requirement, to note about the dumpster enclosure if applicable, matching the masonry materials of the building, the use of type-six curb throughout the site to delineate the parking areas, promote and enhance the aesthetic. We do have some specific comments about the landscape buffering mound along the road frontage. This is like...that's more of a design standard requirement. It doesn't need to be mounded there. It can just transition into the sidewalk. The lighting needs to be downward-directed, shielded, dark sky compliant, and we are recommending review of the hardy plank on non-masonry portions of the building. I would note, a significant portion of the building is masonry, so that is a very good thing for the corridor in general. So that concludes my report.
Yeah, the picture we have of the rendering is...looks like a very nice building.
Yes, it really does.
So any questions for Mr. Wright regarding his presentation?
No.
Mr. Logue, do you have anything you want to add?
The modifications have already been reviewed.
Send them a copy of the staff report.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Wright, the...I see the parking spaces that they were requesting for their staff, plus three additional vehicles in the vans. That's all adequate for this location, correct? And in addition to that, because of the nature of their work, they go and they pick up and bring adults to the facility and take them out. It actually reduces...it's not like a multi-family type of unit going in and having a high traffic count, correct?
Correct. The parking yields on these facilities are very low. It's really predominantly for staff and maybe the occasional drop-off or pickup. These facilities really, the visitors ...the clients don't generate traffic specifically as much as maybe through a coordinated pickup approach, as you mentioned, Trustee Logue.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Wright.
And, Mr. Wright, my question, the curb cuts. This is Old State Route seventy-four, but is ODOT still...
No, and that's a type of...this would be county engineer's office.
County engineer would be...
Yes.
...approve those and allow that? Okay.
Yes. A standard condition of approval would be compliance with all agency of jurisdiction comments.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing regarding this Union Township overlay case number four dash twenty-one dash O for this new development in Mount Carmel. Is there anyone here tonight who would like to speak on behalf of the case? Please come forward. If you could state your name and then your address for the record, and we'll swear you in.
Mike Cloud, Great Lakes Property Development, President, forty-two oh five, East Lake Road, Sheffield Lake, Ohio.
Raise your right hand. You swear the information you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you. Please proceed.
So, good evening, gentlemen. We're excited to...with our partners here to potentially come to Union Township. This building is a product of...this will be our, what, fifth building? Of a very similar design. We've worked out bugs and kinks to serve this operation and to serve this population. Much of what Corey said, we've already indicated in the drawings here that we're gonna do. We always do curb. We do have a small dumpster enclosure. It's always in the same materials as the building. We want a heavily landscaped building, and I think you can go up to Dayton or some of our other locations in Cincinnati and see that we do that. Because of some of the access and parking easements that are available and the disparity of use with the multi-family, it's fully our intention that we want great buffering and screening, which we've indicated in the drawings. We prefer to do a small mound with a fence. The facility is a kind of a Monday-through-Friday daytime hours with the odd Saturday event, and so we like to do on-building, fully shielded lighting, you know, enough for safe access in the dark winter months, but it's not something that we want lit up with full light, so I think we're very compatible with what you're looking for there. Probably the only thing I heard tonight, our standard is tripartite horizontal design. So we have brick, vertical, horizontal siding, shutters, two kinds of roofing, but we do...and we do freezeboard, fascia, et cetera, but we do typically do a high-quality vinyl product, not a cement board product. And that is something we would like to do here as well, so it's consistent for maintenance throughout our facilities. So that's one thing I would like to ask tonight.
So, Mr. Wright, you...
There are high-quality vinyls that will emulate, you know, the hardy plank. It's...
Is that something the staff would be able to work through?
We could work through that administratively, yeah.
Okay.
With respect to the two curb cuts, I know, being a civil engineer, oftentimes municipalities aren't a fan of that. Our purpose is one-way traffic. We have the building laid out, as we always do, passengers, you know, so that we can pull in with these buses, which really aren't full-size buses. They're a wheelchair-accessible bus, and let folks off, and our drivers are safety-trained, but we found for maneuverability on-site, it's really nice if we can pull in and pull out. And so I want to set everybody's mind at ease that we're not having two curb cuts, so we've got people going in and out and causing traffic issues, and we are totally happy to stripe it as one-way. We'll do signage if you think it's necessary, if you think it's a problem, but that's the point of the two curb cuts, just really for wheelchair-accessible van maneuverability. So, other than that, we're really delighted to have the opportunity to come to Union Township.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Any questions for him, please?
No, I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of this case? Okay. Seeing there's no one, I'm gonna close the public portion of this case and open the floor to our board of trustees for their comments or further questions. Gentlemen, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I have nothing. I have nothing to add, except the building is...it's like a very nice structure. I like the look of it very much. It's only that big vacant lot. Been there for years.
Like I say, I don't recall anything ever being there. Mr. McGee, you've lived here longer than I have. Do you recall?
Nothing been there, no. Not since I've been here. I've been here since sixty-four.
Seems an appropriate location for this type of facility.
Yes, it is.
And, gentlemen, your...the renderings, if those are representative of what you're gonna be building, it looks like a very nice building. Looks like it played out very well, and the pictures of it look very good, so I think...
And then if you wish, I've...the website, Howard's website, Joe's website, he's got videos, and one of the great benefits of doing the same building is you can walk, you can literally go right through it, and you guys can see for yourself what the inside looks like as well. It's a great environment built for this population a lot. Oftentimes, they're industrial buildings or storefronts. This building's built for this population.
Yeah, I think it's very respectful. Anything else, gentlemen?
I have nothing else.
All right. Well, regarding this case, Union Township overlay case number four dash twenty-one dash O regarding the Great Lakes Property Development on Old State Route seventy-four in Mount Carmel, is there a motion, and also regarding the recommended modifications?
I'll make a motion that, in accordance with section thirteen-ten of the zoning resolutions, the board of trustees entered a motion to approve the focus area overlay district application for the Great Lakes Property Development in case number four dash twenty-one dash O with the six modifications that are listed above with the paperwork. Thank you very much, sir.
Is there a second?
And I'll second that. To include Mr. Wright, does the six...with six modifications, do we need to have anything in reference for what the gentleman asked for as far as the vinyl siding that's hardy plank-esque?
We could...if the police were, we would respectfully request a change modification to indicate that the ultimate work of staff to allow high-quality building locations and effectively include a high-quality vinyl.
Okay.
Subject to staff approval there. Okay.
Need change in motion, or...
We modify his original motion with that?
Absolutely.
And in that case, I will second the motion with the modification to item number two of six, to have subject to staff approval of the material.
Okay. Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So, welcome to Union Township, and congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wright.
It's another step forward for that Mount Carmel area. We've been working really hard to bring other developments, and I don't know if you've had a complete tour of the area, but, you know, at some point, we'd like to explain to you the history of the area and show you some of the things we worked on, and that way you're more aware of what's going on around there, but...so we welcome you to Union Township.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thanks again to Mr. Wright and the entire zoning department staff. It's a lot of work goes into those projects and these presentations, and we thank you. We thank all your staff.
Amen, as always. They do a great job for us. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on then to old business. Gentlemen, do you have any old business that's...
I have none.
Not finished? None?
I have none.
Okay. Move on to new business then. First item is approval of payments. These are...basically, we're being asked to pay our bills. These are presented by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer. If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the payments.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. The next item is approval of our monthly financial report. Our monthly financial report is also prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer. If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve that.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great. The next item is approval of purchase orders. These are purchase orders that exceed ten thousand dollars. They're recommended by Mr. Ken Geis, our township administrator. Mr. Geis, could you first read through tonight's purchase orders?
First is to the Union Township CIC for the economic development funding that I talked about at three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The next is to Stryker Sales Corporation for the Fire Department. It's the annual technical service agreement, twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Next is for the fiscal office. It's the VIP software annual renewal to Software Solutions at eleven thousand dollars. And the last is for the Service Department for their...to Rumpke of Ohio for the spring junk collection for the dumpsters at twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Geis?
No, sir, I have none.
If there's no discussion, I'll ask for a motion to approve the purchase orders as presented.
So moved, sir.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move on to personnel actions. Tonight, we have one for our administration, our zoning department. Gentlemen, we're being asked to consider Brenda Dodson for the position of full-time administrative assistant with an effective date of March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one at a rate of twenty-six dollars per hour pending a successful completion of the final background check by our police department. Mr. Wright, did you want to make an opening comment?
Thank you, Mr. McGraw, and I'll be brief. I'd like to present to the board Brenda Dodson for consideration for full-time employment as the administrative assistant in Union Township. Brenda has successfully completed all phases of the background check conducted by the police department and is a resident of neighboring Brown County, Ohio, where her and her husband have resided for more than forty years. Brenda has served Claremont Senior Services in varying capacities for more than thirty years, with her most recent position being the manager of the lifelong learning center here at Union Township. Brenda holds a bachelor of arts degree in organizational leadership from Northern Kentucky University and an associate of arts degree from Southern State Community College in General Studies and a nursing certificate from Southern State as well. Thank you.
Quite a resume, though.
Yes, quite. Very much so.
Very good. Gentlemen, do you have any comments?
I have none.
Sounds like great candidate, so...
Yes.
So I'll ask for a motion then that we hire Brenda Dodson for a full-time administrative assistant position.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations. Welcome aboard.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate the job opportunity, and I'll do my best to serve Union Township. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Dodson.
All right, we'll move on to the next item. Gentlemen, we're being asked to establish the twenty-twenty-one Union Township Spring Junk Days. We used to take this for granted, but last year we could not do it.
Couldn't do it.
So, look at it a little bit differently now.
Yes.
So we're being asked to establish the junk days for April nineteenth through April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. That's Monday through Friday, seven AM to five PM, and also a Saturday, eight AM to three PM. Always a well-attended event. Gentlemen, do you have any questions? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve our spring junk days.
I make a motion that we approve the spring junk days to clean up the area.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Taylor, for always organizing a really nice event.
Yes.
Okay. Going...staying with the Service Department for a moment.
Yes, sir.
We're being asked to...for the twenty-twenty-one roadway resurfacing bid authorization. We're being asked to authorize the advertisement receipt of bids relative to the twenty-twenty-one Union Township roadway resurfacing project. Gentlemen, this is always a much anticipated and something very important to the Township.
Amen.
Is there any comment, or if not, I'll ask for a motion to authorize the advertisement receipt of bids?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Very good. And as Mr. Geis said, you know, we may be able to do more than we normally do. That would be a great thing. One of the number-one comments I hear about is, can you get my street paved?
Fill the potholes and...
Fill the potholes and fix the roads, so...but some people also understand, it's not just paving. They also do all the base repairs, stripping down the old stuff.
Milling and everything.
The milling and fixing curbs, sewer grates, things like that go along with this project, so it's quite involved, and they do a great job. All right, we'll move on to contracts, gentlemen. The first approval tonight we're being asked is regarding Cincinnati Eastern Railway Pipeline Crossing Agreement. We're being asked to approve and enter into a pipeline crossing agreement between the Cincinnati Eastern Railway and Union Township relative to the provision of utilities along Round Bottom Road and further authorizing the township administrator to execute any and all documents thereto and furthest of the same. Gentlemen, do you have any opening comments?
I have nothing I think is much needed to have this completed and get it done, get move on down the road so we can get working on these projects on Round Bottom Road. I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just one further comment about the railway. I remember when I first moved here many years ago, at night I could hear the train going through there, and then there was a period of time I never heard a train, and I don't know if I ever saw a train. And it just seems like in the last twelve months, we've talked about trains several times in several different cases. So also on the railroad is a significant asset to Union Township again, helping...they've got some customers down there on Round Bottom and other areas, and they've been very cooperative up to this point to help us get this project underway.
Used to be a very busy railroad, Norfolk and Western down there for many, many years. Very, very busy. Very, very busy. Coal, coal going up to the Westford Gate and then come back down. It's like many years ago.
Well, it's good to see, it's an asset a lot of people don't realize Union Township has is rail access. Great. We'll move on next to the Round Bottom Road sanitary sewer line memorandum of understanding. We're being asked to approve and enter into a memorandum of understanding by and between Union Township Board of Trustees and the Claremont County Board of Commissioners and further authorizing the execution of any and all documents thereto in furtherance of the same. This is in regards to the same project. Any comments or questions?
I have none, sir.
All right. I'll ask for a motion to approve and enter into the memorandum of understanding with the Union Township in Claremont County.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Theme building here. We're moving on to Claremont County again. This is the Claremont County Fire and EMS mutual aid agreement. We're being asked to approve and enter into a mutual aid agreement between the Claremont County Fire Chiefs Alliance and Union Township relative to the provision of fire protection and emergency medical services throughout Claremont County and Union Township. Gentlemen, I'm sure you're aware of mutual aid, but it comes in handy quite often. We're helping other people and often they help us too.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So is there a motion to enter into this memorandum of understanding?
Yes, sir. So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Move on to item H. Gentlemen, this is a transfer of property. This is for economic development purposes. Motion to authorize the transfer of a single parcel, Claremont County Otters Parcel Number 414141.051B, as in Boyd or Bravo, as Mr. Logan would say.
The phonetic alphabet, yes, sir.
Yes. Otherwise identified as 4455 Eva Lane in Batavia. It's a little over half an acre to the Union Township Community Improvement Corporation for the purposes of facilitating economic development in Union Township and/or otherwise accomplishing the sale of the subject property and further authorizing the township administrator to execute any and all documentation required in furtherance of the same. Mr. Geis described this earlier as a parcel that the township really doesn't have a use for and this can make it useful to the people who live there.
Amen, I agree.
So is there a motion for this transfer?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Wasn't too long ago, we had an issue with that address where we had to go in with our zoning department and it's nice to see progress and have it come to resolution with a happy ending.
Yep. Let me ask a question.
Yeah.
Mr. Geis, that's the property where the original owner bought the property back from the township? Is that correct?
No.
No?
No.
All right.
I believe it was a forfeit situation.
It was a foreclosure on the property and there were delinquent taxes, taxes on it. But we satisfied all those arrangements for that and really cleaned up the property for the purposes of selling it to someone else.
Okay. Just in your staff report earlier, I was reading the, "We needed to demolish the structure and clean the site. An adjacent property owner requested opportunity to purchase the lot. We notified the other adjacent property owners and requested sealed proposals for the same lot in essence of equity. Original owner submitted the most responsive and responsible bidder at the highest price." So that, that statement or hearing you speak to that earlier is what made me read or understand it that the original owner.
Oh, that's my fault for the confusion. It was the person that originally submitted a bid in that. We had an adjacent property owner submitted a bid, asked us if we would sell that. And rather than just indiscriminately selling to that, we notified all the other property owners of our intent to sell that property for them. And that was, I'm sorry for the confusion.
Ah, thanks for clarifying that. Happy to hear that we're giving that notice of the intent to sell the property to the adjacent property owner. So that's something I'd definitely like to see continued. So thank you for the information on that.
Thank you for clarifying. Okay. The next is also a transfer of property. This in regards to the Ohio Department Transportation Right-of-Way acquisition and easements regarding some areas on Bach Buxton Road. We're being authorized the granting of various permanent and temporary highway easements in conjunction with the Ohio Department Transportation Bach Buxton Elik Lane Interchange Project, Claremont County 388 Phase Four. These are parcel IDs 346, 347, authorizing the township administrator to negotiate and enter into any and all final settlements with ODOT for their designated right-of-way procurement representative and to execute any and all documentation required in furtherance of the same. Gentlemen, this is pretty standard procedure for a project like this. Was there any other questions or comments?
I have none, sir, this time.
Not this time.
Okay. I'll ask for a motion then to, for this transfer of property to authorize the granting of various permanent and temporary highway easements regarding this project.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Okay. Brings us to the local government fund and our resolutions tonight. This will be a resolution 21, 2021-06. We're being asked to adopt a resolution regarding the local government fund alternative method. Gentlemen, we're being asked to adopt this alternative method for the portionment of undivided local government fund for the calendar year 2022 that per Ohio Revised Code Section 5747.53 excludes the approval of otherwise required of the legislative authority of the city located wholly or partially in the county with the greatest population. Gentlemen, this is in line with what we did in the past as a phase-in, three-year, phase-in local government fund. We're still trying to resolve the Village of Amelia. I think Newtonsville was resolved, but hopefully soon that Amelia will be resolved and it'll be out of this fund.
Absolutely.
So.
Absolutely. I'm hearing a lot of residents of Amelia are having some buyer's remorse with the way that this has unfortunately drug out for them.
Yeah, it's unbelievable.
Very.
Been since 2019, I believe.
Yes, very difficult for them.
So is there a motion then to adopt resolution 2021-06?
So moved, sir.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution is 2021-07, a resolution regarding the non-bargaining unit employee wages. We're being asked to adopt resolution 2021-07 regarding employee wages for non-bargaining unit employees in Union Township.
So moved.
Second. Roll call. Mr. Logan?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes, sir.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Lot of stuff, gentlemen. Thank you for helping. So, gentlemen, I don't believe I missed any items, Mr. Campbell. We look like we're good, right?
We're good. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll move on then and open the floor right now for comments from our board members. Gentlemen, do you have any comments you'd like to make tonight?
I look forward to our junk days coming upon us here as soon as possible. And I know a lot of people through the winter, maybe this hard winter we've had so far, to get out there and clean their yards up and basements and whatever. And thanks to Mr. Taylor and his crew and get it all taken care of and get it cleaned up.
Could be very busy because of all the home improvement projects like you mentioned.
Yeah, everybody being home doing something.
And, Mr. Taylor, just real quick, just, I don't know if you know all the items, but what are the major items that are not allowed to be brought in, just so people know?
The biggest ones are, I guess, let me, the biggest ones are oil, paint, hazardous chemicals, things of that, batteries. And what I mean by batteries are like car batteries.
Yeah.
I will say that the big question we get are mattresses and box springs. We just ask that they are wrapped in plastic.
Okay, and no tires, right?
No tires, correct.
But they can bring a refrigerator?
They can, yes. Anything with refrigerant, we will have removed.
Great.
But we will accept it.
And you don't see the CRT TVs anymore, but one year there was a lot of those.
There was. Yes, we recycled everything we could.
All right. But they could bring those if they still had them.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
All right. Anything else, Mr. McGee?
I have nothing, sir.
Mr. Logan, anything you want to talk about?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of quick comments of community stuff. I know not something we have on our upcoming events, but March 28th, Vietnam Veterans Day, 50th commemoration ceremony is happening by VVA 649 at the memorial at 1:30 p.m. And then we had a lot of talk tonight with really any of the railroad and utility access for the Hamilton Safe Project. And, you know, something that's kind of great and interesting about that part of Union Township, that story when we went to the groundbreaking for those that were in attendance, those that were not there in attendance, the groundbreaking, you know, the initial story basically started off with, I was driving to Cincinnati Nature Center and this big piece of land caught my eye. You know, I just thought that was really unique and it shows the value of membership and people that attend the Cincinnati Nature Center, again, that people that travel from all around the country, but just regionally and locally, it's a great value to have here in Union Township. And you see something like that and, you know, the initial response of, you know, now Hamilton Safe is going in on that piece of property and there'll be another 30 acres that are open for development. So I spoke with Jeff Corny, the executive director of Cincinnati Nature Center, and just have a couple, you know, impact stats basically kind of share for 2020. Because even with COVID, they ended up being one of those areas for growth, really. Once the township, you know, they initially shut down and we worked with them very closely to help them open up early on. They kind of didn't fit in all the right buckets of what the restrictions were at the time, because they were membership, they're not a park. But as that goes, you know, they got open and their visitorship hit a new record of high of just over 250,000 visitors in 2020. Their membership went up 20% for a new record of over 16,000 households, so about 43,000 new individuals by the end of 2020. And then they launched a new Light in the Forest event this last winter, which is very well-attended. Every night was sold out. They had it and 22,000 participants for that. So, you know, just as that goes, they continue to just receive so much positive feedback from the community and it's just a great asset to have here in the township. So just wanted to share that about.
Yeah, definitely. I just went there this weekend, did my running there.
Yeah.
They have two buildings that are on the National Register of Historic Buildings and it's quite a property. They also host events that they may not have this year because of COVID, but normally they would do wedding receptions and other events. So there's a lot of, like you said, tourism that comes through that. Hopefully there's people either and then go out to have lunch or buy some gas maybe or do something else in the township.
Absolutely.
But it is quite a property. And also the kids that go there for preschool, they provide that kind of thing.
Yeah, quite a growing program they're doing, kind of a Montessori-esque like setup. And yeah, it's been very, that's been very strong too. It's, they're booked and booked and booked out.
But I'll also mention my good friend Cindy, who has the Raptors Incorporated, which is adjacent to their property, which is quite a unique thing for Union Township. One time she came here and actually did a demonstration about her bogan, I believe. And, but they are open, they do have an open house once a month. So check out Raptors Incorporated too, if you like the nature center and that kind of thing. She rehabilitates injured birds.
Yep.
Some can't go back out in the wild. They become like programmed birds for teaching kids and things like that. But their properties touch each other and they coordinate things together. So if you've never been or paid attention to Raptors Incorporated, that's another place to check out.
Yeah.
Anything else?
No, no. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, I'm going to mention a few things here and I'll let the public make comments, but real quick, we had recent zoning cases for Ross Dress for Less and also Swenson's. And I just posted some things on Facebook about that, but Ross, over 530 people shared the post I put on.
Oh, wow.
With other people on Facebook. So apparently there's a, Mr. Logan, you had mentioned that you had heard that there was, it's a popular store.
Very, yep.
You're obviously very right. People would be very excited about that coming. Also, Swenson's got over 200 shares. People are very excited about that. But I did want to mention, you know, people were excited about Cooper's Hawk too. And, Mr. Geis, I know this is top your list too, that we want to try to attract some really nice first-class restaurants like Cooper's Hawk. And I know our staff has been working on that with, when the COVID happened, we had a couple lined up really and then the COVID happened and they both fizzled out, unfortunately. Maybe they'll come back around in the future. But I know a lot of residents always bring that up, that, you know, it's great that the fast food and all, but we want a nice sit-down restaurant. So I know the demand is there, especially when there's a two-hour wait to go to a steak place here in Union Township. It just shows to me that the demand for a nice restaurant, it really is there. And we have some nice restaurants, but I think they want more. So maybe the mall and eventually that property could incorporate some of those ideas too. So just want to mention that, the popularity of those two things we recently worked on. I had the pleasure of being invited to participate in a project with Willowville Elementary. The principal there is Kevin Jones. He contacted me and the school, the fifth graders wanted to do something to outreach to the community more than what they do now. And they came to me to see, you know, what things already exist for, as far as helping less privileged people in our area. And they wanted to do something maybe new or didn't exist. So the fifth graders did a tremendous presentation of PowerPoint, spreadsheets. They had an estimate cost and they had to do 3D models. It was really impressive. So if you need, if you need any computer help with projects, go to Willowville Fifth Grade. Those kids were really on top of it. But anyway, we had a nice presentation this week. They presented their ideas and then we had a panel that included myself and people like Lance Perry from the district and also the superintendent Natasha Adams was there. But also representing Union Township, Mr. Chief Gaviglia was Officer Metzger, was part of the project. And he had a lot of very positive things to say. What a great representative of our police department. What a great outreach to the kids. You know, they're not, some people, the only contact with police officers being arrested and that's a, you know, a negative connotation. But in this case, the police are like on the front lines with the kids in the schools. And Officer Metzger did a great job. So I just wanted to relay that to you. It's nice to have a professional like that as part of your staff. And I know you have a lot of great people that work for you and in our fire department as well, but I just wanted to point him out because he was part of this project. So. So anyway, we gave them feedback and they're going to come up with some ideas, what they're going to do. One thing they came up with they could do very quickly was have an outdoor give-and-take library, sort of like the giving boxes that exist now. People can donate books. A kid could walk up and get a book and then bring it back when they're done with it. The other project was, along with a canned food drive that they already do, they want to do a shoe drive to get young kids who don't have the proper shoes to wear, get them nice shoes. And the third thing they was more ambitious was building a greenhouse, which the district's actually behind. They want to use as an educational device for all the grades. And they're going to look into some grant opportunities. And I don't know, Mr. Geis and Mr. Wright, if you know of any grant opportunities that maybe fit along those lines. The district would probably like to hear that. It's probably something they could do at several schools. But anyway, those are the ideas they came up with and it was a really nice presentation. And they were very thankful to Union Township in general for all the support we give the schools. So I wanted to mention that. And also, it's not in our list of things, I don't think, but roads closed. We have some major road projects. Teal Town Road right now is closed right at Old 74. And there's detours of, down Schoolhouse Road is the main detour for that. But also Round Bottom Road, the bridge is closed down by the UDF and just over the, you know, right by the borderline of Miami Township, Union Township. And the Round Bottom Road to Milford Parkway and Chamber Drive is the way to get around that. But that's a major, that's going to be a long project, almost nine months, I think, or maybe 10 months. Also, the flyover ramp is currently closed right now. or maybe 10 months. Also, the flyover ramp is currently closed right now and hopefully they'll get that done fairly quick to shore up. There were some landslide issues with some of the barriers and they're trying to fix that. So, just want to mention all of this. It's definitely road construction season. But the new traffic light at Schoolhouse Road is now operational. So, if anybody hasn't been down that way lately, but for many, many years, people asked for a traffic light at Schoolhouse Road at Old 74. It's now operational and makes it much easier to get up that little hill and get up off of Schoolhouse Road at Old 74.
That was terrible.
So, much, much, much safer. Okay. So, now, I will, there's no other comments?
No.
One last chance, okay. I'll open the floor to public comments. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment tonight? All right, seeing there's no one now. But you can always email us, reach out to us by calling Township here. Our website is a great place for information. If you need to get ahold of us, you can also email us through the website. So, great way to get ahold of us. All right, upcoming events. So, it's going to mention the post office continues to be open for business during normal hours. Come get your packages mailed, get stamps. They do a great job down there, very friendly staff. The civic center offices are open to the public for zoning permits and general information. The Queen City Room is open for limited reservations for government and nonprofits only. Check our website for more details on that. Easter is celebrated on Sunday, April 4th, 2021 this year. So, Happy Easter, everybody. That'll occur before our next meeting, I believe. The parks still remain open to the public and they're being very heavily used, so great news there. And, Mr. Geis, you mentioned the possibility of maybe a pickle court at some point in the future. I happened to be in a neighborhood recently where they built or painted their own pickle court on the street in the cul-de-sac. And I said, "Okay." But I asked them, I said, "Why do people use it?" They said, "Especially during COVID, it's been the most used thing in the neighborhood." The people, they had neighborhood tournaments, everybody going over to use the pickleball court that they made. So, I think it is very popular. So, it's something maybe we should consider more closely when we get the funds and look to do that in the future. So, I just thought I'd mention it because I thought, I've never played pickleball, but also I've run into it several times recently. So, it is becoming more popular. Spring Junk Days, we've already talked about. They're going to take place April 19th through April 24th. We'll have more news about that. And also, we'll mention McNicholas High School. They're having a community shred fundraising event on April, or Saturday, April 24th, 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And I believe there's a fee involved. It's a fundraiser for them. But we just want to mention it as a community school for us, that they're having this event. And it's a great way to get your, you know, documents shredded, especially right after tax time, if you've got stuff you need to hold records to get rid of. So, that's that. So, gentlemen, we have a request to go into executive session. This is pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22, Section G, for the following reason: to consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22, Section G1. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Taken.
Go call. Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. McGroll?
Yes.
We're into executive session at 8:13 PM.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. We'll be back, hopefully soon.
Gentlemen, coming out of executive session, I need a motion then to approve coming out of executive session.
Second.
Roll call. Mr. McGee?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. McGraw?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 9:50 PM.
Thank you very much. At this time, there is no action to be taken as a result of the executive session. So gentlemen, is there any thing we need to do? Any other final comments?
No, sir.
No, sir.
All right. I'll ask for a motion then to adjourn our meeting.
Second.